All right, we'll call this meeting ordered. Very short meeting tonight, we really appreciate friends and family, I think all of you understand this is a swearing in or swearing act ceremony, depending on how you look at it, but I know, I appreciate friends and family being here, and I know Jimmy Tate, I think it's big for your team, we appreciate our friends and family for being here for this special night for us, so, thank you very, very much for being here. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to County Manager Mr. Horton, bring in comments, and then he'll recognize the judge who will be doing swearing in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. State law requires that after each election, County Commissioners are to be sworn into office on the first Monday of the month of December, which is today. I've had some people's schedules, but we appreciate Jimmy being able to be in, but we're excited to go ahead and start that tonight, and we're honored to have with us our President Superior Court Judge Downs to do the swearing in, so we would ask that Commissioner Corbin, Tate, and Commissioner-elect Higdon, if you would come down front, the judge would, and Mike Decker, our Deputy Clerk, has the oath of office that you need to subscribe to, and we would ask your honor to do the official swearing in of our Commissioners for their terms of office.
Let me say just one word before we start. The last twenty-nine plus years, about every two years, I've had the privilege of coming here and ministering an oath to various people in the county that have been elected by people in the county with these jobs, and it's an honor for me to do that. The greatest change that I've noticed is that the pictures as they go on each year, I've begun to swell. Kevin told me he's lost weight through a fine plan, before I leave here, I'm getting it in right. But I know that friends and family here with those who have been sworn in are proud of that with some, and we all are, serving in this county for the next two or four or more years. That ball out there late, those who have served, some in this room today, tonight, have served this county, and this county has been served well all along, so I look for that to change one bit. Now, let me ask you all, do you anticipate your families coming up here with you?
Yeah.
Have you all been?
First time.
Well, if you're going to have families, we need to do it one at a time, and if we don't, we'll do it all three at once.
Big team, hold it back. At the end of this.
I think so.
I think we'll have to make it.
No good. Who wants to go first?
Am I getting that quick?
What is your best side? I don't have a good.
Right hand on the round.
Left hand or right hand? Left hand.
Seven hand on the round.
Say aye on your full name.
Aye, H. Kevin Corbin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Of County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
Of Macon County.
Of Macon County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations again.
Thank you, sir.
You want your back?
I do.
Aye, and states your full name.
Aye, Chairman Stoltate.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As County Commissioner.
As County Commissioner.
Of Macon County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
We always have long, we've got a faithful Commissioner. A new kid on the block, always remind us, the prime reminder, "If I ever decide you make, you'll make about half glad and half mad." So when you walk in with a world of friends, you leave with not so many. Raise your right hand. Aye, and states your full name.
Aye, Paul Clayton Higdon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As County Commissioner.
As County Commissioner.
Of Macon County.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
We always have long, we've got a faithful Commissioner. A new kid on the block, always remind us, the prime reminder, "If I ever decide you make, you'll make about half glad and half mad." So when you walk in with a world of friends, you leave with not so many. Raise your right hand. Aye, and states your full name.
Aye, Paul Clayton Higdon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As County Commissioner.
As County Commissioner.
Of Macon County.
Of Macon County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
We keep it real, we're calling the rest of the talks, and then there'll be a couple of meetings, we'll wait for you.
Thank you, Judge Downs, appreciate that. Good job.
The next order of business is the election of Chair and Vice Chair of the County Commissioners to serve for the next twelve months. The county elects a Chairman each December, the first Monday of December each year, to serve for the subsequent year, so the rules of procedure for Macon County are that the County Manager will conduct the election of the Chairman, and then the Chairman will conduct the election for the Vice Chairman's seat. So as County Manager, this time I would open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Manager, speaking for myself and a few others, our officers and others that send this from their service, in the Chairman, his deferment to the Senator Chairman, of any way, unless this County Commission, and I believe the Commissioner Corbin has not only shown that he's a, he does a wonderful job as Chairman, he's always been part of the public, appeared before this board, and he's worked hard, so with that, I proudly would like to place a nomination, Kevin Corbin as Chairman of Macon County Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Manager, I'd like to say to that motion, and couldn't agree more.
We have a motion to elect, from a member of the members of the Board, Kevin Corbin for Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, and second to that motion, are there other motions or nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried unanimously, congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All the payrolls. All right, I think the next, the next order of business is the election of Chair and Vice Chair of the County Commissioners to serve for the next twelve months. The county elects a Chairman each December, the first Monday of December each year, to serve for the subsequent year, so the rules of procedure for Macon County are that the County Manager will conduct the election of the Chairman, and then the Chairman will conduct the election for the Vice Chairman's seat. So as County Manager, this time I would open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Manager, speaking for myself and a few others, our officers and others that send this from their service, in the Chairman, his deferment to the Senator Chairman, of any way, unless this County Commission, and I believe the Commissioner Corbin has not only shown that he's a, he does a wonderful job as Chairman, he's always been part of the public, appeared before this board, and he's worked hard, so with that, I proudly would like to place a nomination, Kevin Corbin as Chairman of Macon County Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Manager, I'd like to say to that motion, and couldn't agree more.
We have a motion to elect, from a member of the members of the Board, Kevin Corbin for Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, and second to that motion, are there other motions or nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carried unanimously, congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All the payrolls. All right, I think the next, the next order of business is the election of the Vice Chairman of the Board, and would there be?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say in a sense, the bipartisanship, and also as senior member of this Board, I think it's on the right for Commissioner Bill to be Vice Chairman, so I'd like to make a motion that Commissioner Bill be Vice Chairman.
Okay, we have second to that motion. Second, Mr. Manager, we have a motion that we should really elect Vice Chairman, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the signified saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. The next order of business, gentlemen, I think our attorney would tell us that we need to adopt a regular meeting schedule to let the public know when our regular meetings are, and we have, the past year, we met once a month, that was on the, I believe, Mr. Attorney, on the second Tuesday of each month, and that is the schedule that's been placed before you, and just so the public knows, we can adopt this as our regular meeting schedule and then call special meetings, as this one today is, for any purpose after that, so with that said, you have seen and been given copy of that meeting, and I think that is consistent throughout the calendar, it's the second Tuesday, Mr. Decker.
Second. And Mr. Chairman, we did check this against the holiday calendar and special events coming up through the year, we didn't find conflict with any of these dates, unless somebody scheduled a vacation.
Disfectingly continued your existing scheduled meetings.
Okay. We need to approve that? We, I think we need to vote on that, so a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve the 2013 regular meeting schedule, let's pretend you have a chance.
Okay, we have motion and second to approve the meeting schedule, and a copy of that will be available, but just again, it is the second Tuesday of each month at six o'clock, meeting at the Commissioners' Boardroom at five, West Main Street, Franklin, North Carolina, is that true, Mr. Attorney? Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. And we have one more brief item, and I recognize the County Manager for, we have to, need to award one contract or consider awarding one contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county's been involved with administering a sewer project over the past almost three years now, it was originally supposed to take a year, but it took about eleven years to get started, so it's taken a little bit longer to get completed. Though we're close to being completed now, the only part left that needs to be done to complete the sewer project is the green part of the project, which involved a spray reuse irrigation system where a percentage of the treated water from the wastewater treatment plant would then pipe over, would be piped over to the landfill and sprayed out along the property up there, and diverted from going back into the system. This water is treated, can be used for anything except human consumption, and it's usually used for things like washing down equipment, keeping dust down on roads, aerobatic plants and so forth. The original contractor for the project is Garry's Grading and Paving Company, and we did talk to them about completing the project and ask if they had any objections to letting a bigger local contractor finish that portion of it up. We did talk to the state and asked them if we could modify that, instead of just taking the water, spraying it out on the ground, to take that reused water and pipe it over and use it to wash down the animal shelter, to use it to wash down the heavy equipment for the landfill, to keep the road washed down or sprayed in times of severe dust, and also to use it to irrigate the plants and so forth at the Farm and Resource Center. They agreed all of that. Garry's Grading agreed that the county wanted to have someone else complete that portion of the project, they had no objection to it, and reduced their contract by whatever amount we would have paid them to have that done. Just as a word of note, the original cost for Garry's Grading was going to be about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. We went through the state, and they allowed us to do informal bids, we had informal bids, and we had four bids that came in, we reviewed them, and the county has already bought the pipe for this project, and we decided that we'd go ahead and buy the hydrants as well, there are six hydrants, yard hydrants that go into it, and so taking into consideration the cost of putting that in, the county furnishing the pipe and the hydrants, doing a little more work at the sewer treatment plant itself, which included installing some three-inch pipe, about three hundred feet of that, in order to make that system work, and a slight modification of running off the three-inch pipe with two-inch pipe to the hydrants, we had four, four bids, they were from Steelwell Enterprises, Appalachian Construction, Haywood Grading, and Watson Construction, and the low bid was from Watson Construction of a hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars, Haywood Grading was one twenty-six eight seventy-five, Appalachian Construction was one thirty-five one fifty-one, and Steelwell Enterprises was one thirty-three two-ten. We've been, we've looked at them, evaluated, we feel that Watson Construction, they can do the job, they are approved by the engineers who are administering the project, and it would be our recommendation to award a contract to our local contractor, Watson Construction, to do this part of the project, and I believe they can start on it right away, so hopefully, Mr. Higdon, another year won't go by before we complete this project, Mr. Higdon in the past is very familiar with it, helped us with some fieldwork as we went through the project, but the recommendation tonight is to ask the Board's permission to allow us to contract with Watson Construction to do this reuse system, and to have them go ahead and complete that as soon as possible, for the price that they quoted at one twenty-four eight ninety-five.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve Watson Grading for the sum of one twenty-four eight ninety-five for the green portion of the contract for the sewer system, and again, this is keeping with this Board's policy of trying to employ local people at every junction, so I'd gladly make the motion to approve Watson Grading for the contract.
We have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to employ Watson Construction, as noted, price being one hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and no cents. Any discussion regarding the motion?
I do want to ask one thing, so that one twenty-four eight ninety-five is going to be the total price of completely finished, one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
That's complete, as far as this portion goes, now there is a little bit of paving work that needs to be done, will be done by a contractor for Garry's Grading, and I think that's the only thing outside of this that needs to be completed.
Do you have a question? How much do you think?
I don't know, I think they're getting quotes on the grading, on the paving now, I understand the paving company, paving, asphalt plants are going to be closed down in the middle of this month, so they've got to get it done over the next two weeks, that's the responsibility of Garry's Grading, he's working with the engineers to do that, but there is, it is a unit price contract, and so whatever our agreed two terms were in the original contract, on per yard, will be the same amount that we charge in for the paving work that needs to be done.
Thank you, Christian Higdon. Any other questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, motion signify by saying aye, and none opposed, that motion passes. Mr. Manager, any other business coming for the Board?
Just a reminder that the next regular meeting of the Board is next Tuesday night at eleven.
Eleven, six o'clock, five, West Main Street. And one thing I would like to bring up, gentlemen, if you would, I think we're halfway through the year, and I think in respect to, maybe to Mr. Higdon as well, being a new Commissioner, I think it'd be good if we had a board retreat, maybe get our heads together a little bit on some advanced planning for what we want to do. Budget, maybe do some planning for the upcoming year, and I think there's some wisdom in that, that we can give our County Managers some direction, if that would make approval of the Board, and I would suggest we do that sooner, not later. So I'll throw a date out, Saturday is January the nineteenth, if you've got, if we can take a Saturday morning and do that, bet we clear on Saturday morning, the nineteenth, I'll do that. So I'll throw that out as a suggestion, that we maybe have a board retreat that morning, I'm saying maybe nine, if we're in social quarters, you can send it. Okay, and I'll just do that as a statement, any other suggestions?
Any other motion on that?
Well, I think, I think Mr. Tate has, I'll, I'll tell him. I just threw that out, try to get away with the holidays, we can do it a week earlier.
We don't need to go earlier. We may have some other.
Well, I would say we need to have some financials ready.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, Mr. Chairman, that we all, all are in Raleigh from the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-four, and twenty-fifth for the Great State Dose Conference, that you've been so involved in, we'll, we start on them at seven-thirty in the morning on the twelfth, so if you don't want to keep this week black to live, I'd be pretty. But that, but, so we're all in Raleigh beginning on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, twenty-third.
We'll leave on twenty-second, twenty-third, the meeting starts at nine, on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and come home that night. So the, so the next Saturday is twenty-sixth?
Yeah, the nineteenth.
Or about February the second.
I'm open for suggestions. I had talked to the managers, I think we need, we need to do it at least the nineteenth, so we can have some financials, and see where we are halfway through the year, and then I think, you know, we need to be looking ahead and give them some direction.
It could be a little later than that, Mr. Chairman, it could be a little later than that, and we wanted to be able to have at least the first couple of weeks of January in order to give you a good financial, snapshot of this first half of this year in terms of finances.
What if, with the nineteenth, I'm more confused, as you say?
Oh, no, I thought Jim had a problem.
No, he's okay.
Oh, I, Jim, well, he's got some beef.
Christian Higdon, you okay with the nineteenth? Christian Higdon, you okay with the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Christian Higdon?
Oh, yeah.
Man, oh, were you okay with the nineteenth?
Just on the Saturday, so.
And no reason I suggest a Saturday, it seems like that needs a little more time than we can, you know, when you're six o'clock, at nine, maybe take it to nine-twelve, or nine-one.
Nine-one.
Yeah, nine, nine a.m., that's worried for anybody, really, thirty, be run.
That is, that was you doing it.
I would say, let's meet, we need somewhere we can sit around a table together.
Usually, it's a question of sound question, that's the question.
Okay. It sounds like that's agreeable, so let's go ahead and announce that we will have a board retreat, and that will be open to the public, and we'll all be there, meeting, discussing county business, that'll be January the nineteenth at nine a.m. at the boardroom in the southwestern booth, so, Mr. Manager, or Mike, would you please double check, I'm sure that's available, and we'll plan to meet from nine until when we're done.
And Mr. Chairman, do we need, I don't know if Paul has got the information on that, but as for West Carolina, is that the ninth and tenth January?
Like, because of the January, the school for County Commissioners, essentials of County Commissioners, and also the ethics training which you all require to do, and there's also a, a public water sewer section in there, that's going to be including that training.
And we do have to at least attend, and that was in Asheville, I know there's another in Chapel Hill, another one somewhere else, the closest one in Asheville, so, and that's the ninth and tenth January.
Yeah, yeah, they're both, I believe it's the ninth and tenth.
That's right. It's in Asheville, double trip, yeah. So we're going to be leaving on that on eighth level, even like we did last year.
I think they start in the morning of the, of the ninth.
We can describe over on the, early.
You can, if you want to leave about, oh, six o'clock that morning, you can get there, or you go with the light on, but.
Six o'clock.
Six.
No, no, I mean, that one's starting at early.
I think they start about, I'll have to.
It's five o'clock, y'all do, she won't be there to pick it up.
It's nine o'clock, we leave here seven-thirty.
That's in the morning, there's two of them.
But it's, it's especially, Mr. Tate hadn't had a chance to go to that before, Mr. Higdon has not either, y'all went to it two years ago.
We did.
And we have, there are probably as many veteran Commissioners who go to it as new Commissioners, and.
When the last time we all five went, around there?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the ninth and tenth of January, so we'll be attending that as, as prepared together. That's all the business I have, anybody have any, any other questions, have any business coming for the Board before we begin?
Anybody, the, the, you sworn in Commissioners, say anything before you break your reception.
Well, I'd, I'd just like to say, welcome to Christian Higdon, Mr. Board, I'm sure would have a good word of Blatche with him, and look forward to his service in Macon County next four years, so, well, welcome, welcome future Board, I'll take you, anything you want to say.
Just appreciate everybody's support of me to get here, it's an honor to be here, I look forward to the next four years, serving the people in Macon County.
Christian Tate?
I agree with Paul's statements there, I also think my social coordinator should start being there, so we can.
And I too would like to welcome.
Mr. Manager, any other business to come before board?
Just a reminder that the next regular meeting of the Board is next Tuesday night at eleven.
Eleven at six o'clock, five West Main Street. And one thing I would like to bring up, gentlemen, if you would, I think we're halfway through the year. And I think in respect to, maybe to Mr. Higdon as well, being a new Commissioner, I think it'd be good if we had a board retreat, maybe get our heads together a little bit on some advanced planning for what we want to do budget-wise. Maybe do some planning for the upcoming year, and I think there's some wisdom in that, that we can give our County Managers some direction if that would make the approval of the Board. And I would suggest we do that sooner, not later. So I'll, I'll throw a date out, Saturday is January the nineteenth, if you got it. We could take a Saturday morning and do that, get the week clear on Saturday morning, the nineteenth, I'll do that. So I'll throw that out as a suggestion, that we maybe have a board retreat that morning. I'm saying maybe not until social coordination. Okay, and I'll, just do that as a date, any other suggestions? Any other motion on that? Well, I think, I think Mr. Tate has, I'll. I just threw that out, try to get away with the holidays, we could do it a week earlier.
We don't need to go earlier.
Well, I was going to say, we need to have some financials read.
Just a reminder, Mr. Chairman, that we all, all are in Raleigh from the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-four, and twenty-fifth for the Regulated Doors Company. But you've been so involved in, we'll, we start on them at seven-thirty in the morning on the twelfth, so if you don't want to keep this late, it's eleven, I'd freak you. But that's, but, so we're all in Raleigh beginning on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, we're first.
We'll leave on twenty-second, twenty-third, the meeting starts at nine, on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and we'll come home that night. So the, so the next Saturday is twenty-sixth?
Yeah. The nineteenth and the second.
Or about February the second.
I'm, I'm open for suggestions. I had talked to the manager, I think we need to, we need to do it at least the nineteenth, so we can have some financials and see where we are halfway through the year. And then I think, you know, we need to be looking ahead and giving some direction.
It could be a little later than that, Mr. Chairman, it could be a little later than that. We wanted to be able to have at least the first couple of weeks of January for it to give you a good financial snapshot of this first half of this year in terms of finances.
With the nineteenth, I'm more confused, you say?
Oh, no, I thought Jim had a problem.
No, he's okay.
Well, I'm, I'm giving a problem, that's something.
Mr. Hayton, you okay with the nineteen?
Yeah.
Were you?
Oh, were you okay with the nineteen?
It's on the Saturday, so.
And no reason I suggest a Saturday, it seems like that needs a little more time than we can, you know, come here at six o'clock at nine, maybe take the nine-twelve or nine-one. Yeah, nine, nine-eighteen, that's too early for anybody to realize, thirty, be around. I, I would say let's meet, we need somewhere we can sit around a table together.
Usually it's Southwest, that's the best place.
It sounds like that's agreeable, so let's go ahead and announce that we will have a board retreat, and that will be open to public. And we'll all be there, meeting, discussing county business. That'll be January the nineteenth at nine a.m. at the Boardroom, the Southwest Future College. So, Mr. Manager, or Mike, if you please double check, I'm sure that's available. And we'll plan to meet from nine to when we're done.
And Mr. Chairman, do we need, I don't know if Paul has got the information on that, but at the Western Carolina, is that the ninth and tenth Jan-
Ninth and tenth of January, the School for County Commissioners, Essentials of County Commissioners, and also the Ethics Training, which you all require to do. And there's also a, a Public Water Sewer Section in there, that's going to be including that training.
And we do have to at least attend, and that one's in Asheville, I know there's another in Chapel Hill, and another one somewhere else, the closest one's in Asheville, so. And that's the ninth and tenth of January.
They're both, I believe it's the ninth and tenth of January.
That's right.
It's in Asheville, they were.
Double trip.
So I'm always going to be thinking on that on eight, like we're even, like we're done last year.
I think they start in the morning of the, of the ninth.
We can just drive over on the ninth.
You can, you, you want to leave about, oh, six o'clock that morning, you get there, or you go with nine, four, but.
Six o'clock.
Six twenty.
No, no, I think that one started at earth.
I think they start about, I'll have to.
It's five o'clock, y'all do. She won't be there at ten.
It's nine o'clock, we leave here seven thirty.
That's in the morning, there's two of them.
But it's, it's, it's especially, Mr. Tate hadn't had a chance to go to that before. Mr. Higdon has not either, y'all went to it two years ago.
We did.
And we have, there, there are probably as many federal Commissioners that go to it as new Commissioners.
Well, the last time we all five went. Okay, that's the ninth and tenth of January, so we'll be attending that as well together. That's all the business I have, anybody have any, any other questions, have any business to bring before board?
Anybody, the, 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 any sworn in Commissioners want to say anything before you break your reception?
Well, I'd go, I'd just like to say, welcome to Christian Higdon, to the Board, I'm sure we'll have a good working relationship with him and look forward to his service in Macon County for the next four years, so Paul, welcome, welcome to the future Board. Anything you want to say?
Just appreciate everybody's support me to get here, and it's an honor to be here. Look forward to the next four years serving the people in Macon County.
Richard Tate.
Agree with Paul Seames there, also think our social coordinators should start being here, so we're getting.
And I too would like to welcome Paul Higgins, we've been friends a long time, we differ, we differ politically just a ton. But we've been friends a long time, and all of you are good assets of this Board. In Macon County, which you'll learn real quick, when the politics is over, it's over. It's like the football, when the clock runs out, it's over. And so the politics time is over, and then we'll work together for, do our best for this county, and Paul will be inviting.
Welcome, Christian Higdon.
Thank you, sir. Oh, welcome all of us here.
Glad to be here. And I would echo these, gentlemen, appreciate the, we didn't have a general election, we had primary, but we appreciate those voting for us that allowed us to be here, and we'll do our best to serve the county, to the best for our building, so. With that, with that said, what's that?
The one night football game, it's Saturday night at seven. And we need, you play it, Ron? Yeah, I'm going to play one place. Kevin's son's playing, as is mine, and this is a big fundraiser for, they'll be playing still at seven-thirty in Franklin. And it's a fundraiser for the program, and a lot of these other schools have made some, some big bucks. And our, our football program needs you at Macon County, so we'd ask if you, if you've got any long handles, I'd put them on, unless it's seventy like it is today. But if not, we'd ask for your support, I think tickets are ten bucks, and so let's come out and support our, our youth.
EMS would stand up.
EMS. They'll be following big clubs.
With that said, thank you again, all of you friends and family, it's a lot for us to have you here. This is a very well-attended County Commissioners meeting, we appreciate your, your time. We do have, I'll make some food out in the hallway, so we'll hang around and visit as long as you'd like to. So with that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye. And we stand adjourned.